First off, before we start the meeting, I just want to introduce, we've got a couple of new members, alternate members, Dave Lucia and Butch Nato right here.
Yeah, we know.
Paul Crane, this is the VP of the Board here, Bob Paulson, and Attorney Jacob Morris on the end there.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Artie Wells, I don't know if you guys know Artie Wells, he's another member of the Board, but he's not here this evening.
Okay.
And that's the girl that makes it all happen, Tamika Murphy. She is amazing, she keeps this thing running like a top, so. Don't forget Tamika. All right. All right, well, welcome, everybody. This is a meeting of the Town of Rutland Zoning Board of Appeals for December 7th, 2022, 6:00 PM. First item up on the agenda is the meeting minutes from August 3rd, 2022. We have a motion to accept those, and then we'll have the discussion. If there's any things to discuss on that motion. No, we actually do the motion first, right, and then discussion?
A motion and second, and then discussion.
And then discussion, yeah. We always do it, we always did it wrong, to be honest with you. So. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. What you said is kind of illogical to me. That's why I did it, that is not the way it's going, I guess I'm. So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Paul's second is all right. Any discussion on the meeting minutes from August 3rd, 2022? You look good to me. You're good to me.
Yep, fine.
Is all good?
Yep.
All right. All in favor of accepting the meeting minutes from August 3rd as they are prepared? Aye. Any ayes? None, motion carries, yes.
All right, Chris, this is a, I made through procedural for the new guys here. We've always allowed them to vote on minutes. Anything we're doing, just not on the actual final.
Decisions, yeah.
Decisions. Are we continuing that?
That's the way, yeah.
Yeah, so you guys are allowed to, and you were fully involved in the conversations too.
Yeah, I said to him that, you know, conversations, sit right up here, comment, say anything you need, but. And on this one, listen, Artie, so we need one of them to be the voting member tonight, correct?
Nope, because you have four poll members.
Okay. But we can still have one of them, right?
They can, yep, they can. Yep, in this case, Dave just has to abstain on the minutes because he wasn't here.
Okay.
You just have to abstain on the minutes because you weren't here.
Oh, on that last one?
Yeah, on the last one.
All right, I abstain.
Sorry, I didn't ask. Procedural things, okay. All right, so do any, do either one of you guys want to be a voting member on this?
I don't care, that's fine, yeah.
Dave, all right?
Yeah, sure.
So there we go, so it'll be us four and Dave, okay? All right, so the first item, the next item on the agenda is for a variance for Zero Paddock Road. We have an application for a variance here. Let's see. Petitioner Gregory Mazer, is that correct?
Just me.
That's you, thank you, sir. Is applying for a variance for, to seek a residential single-family permit?
Correct.
For a lot that doesn't have quite enough sufficient footage, square footage, is that correct? All right, Mr. Mazer, do you want to, kind of, you guys sent us a lot of information here.
I didn't know what your name is, so I gave you everything.
Yeah, no, that's great, the more the better, you know? The more the better. Do you want to just kind of go through your information and tell us what's happening?
So I kind of took two different approaches to this. One of them, it says in the variance application, it says, you know, we explained why it would be a hardship and why your application for variance would be in keeping with the intent of the zoning. And so the first approach there is that it's got more than adequate frontage for that zoning area. The house is 300 feet away from the nearest neighbor. And there's, you know, there's not another buildable lot in there where it's, you know, it's going to get overcrowded. The lot was owned by the town as a tax foreclosure, and I bought that a couple of years ago. And at the time when it was presented, it was basically saying it was a buildable lot as long as it's not a wetlands issue. And of course, I had a wetlands survey done, and I had a perk test done, and they, on the perk test thing, they basically, you know, said it's, you know, this far from wetlands and all that, and that's. So, and then, of course, the other thing is in the town bylaws, it says if a lot existed and was referenced prior to the adoption of the zoning laws, that it's effectively grandfathered in. So this would meet that standard as well, so.
All right, so those are your two arguments, basically?
Those are my, those are my two arguments as far as why it should be a buildable lot.
Okay, so one's a, one, okay, so technically, you wouldn't need the variance if the grandfather applies. Is that correct, guys, is that the way we see this?
Yes.
Or if that doesn't apply, then you're just going for the straight-up variance?
Straight-up variance, right.
Okay.
It's a couple of feet short, it's 1.39 acres instead of 1.5, but it's got.
Like 60,000 something square feet, you need 64 or something, is that right?
Yeah, so I've got 316 feet of frontage instead of like the, you know, the 150. I've got almost double the frontage needed for that zoning, I just don't have the square footage on the lot.
Is it 200 or 150, you're thinking?
Depends, 200 in most of the town, I don't know, that might be, there's one area that's less.
I live on Dakota.
200 there.
Our 40, oh, our 40 is 150.
Yeah.
60 is 200.
Yeah.
Is that our 60 or our 40?
That's 40, yeah.
There's a couple of areas in Lincoln.
Couple of old school areas. All right. Then you get your septic and well all approved by the Board of Health.
So I haven't had a well done yet, I did have a septic, in fact, it was, it was when I applied for the septic, or when I took, did the septic design, I was going to apply it to the Board of Health, the Board of Health said, well, we need a building permit before we can do that, and then the building department said, you don't have the acre. So that's why I said, okay, I'm not hiring the architect, I'm not going to answer the stuff until we know that I can build it.
I understand. Yeah, makes sense, yeah. But that septic was approved by the Board of Health, correct?
Yes.
And then the well, you just put that in outside the area, maybe anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I have a proposed well location.
Guys, excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen, we're having a meeting here, please just take it outside, thank you. This could be entertaining, maybe, we should, we should go there and watch, huh? All right, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, so I do have, when they did the septic design, they, you know, put in where the salt barriers needed to be for the wetlands, and the well was still within that.
Within the, yeah, you had the parameters to put it in.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right, so we'll see what the footage, all right, so. So this lot, so do you have proof here in this package that this lot, let's start, I think we should start with the grandfathering first, right? Because that's probably a cleaner, easier way to go with this, right? If you guys don't mind, and it's kind of a silver bullet. So I see some deeds here, late back in the end of your package here. Land court.
So in.
March 50, is this March 52? Oh, no.
60, May of 62, isn't it? I think that, I think here, because 1962 was the first time it was conveyed out to that lot.
The first time it was conveyed out?
Yeah.
So in 62, the lot was conveyed, in 63, a portion of it was sold to Anthony and Dorothy Coppola.
Yeah, but I saw where they abutted part of that property.
Right.
On one of these plans, I saw Coppola there, yeah, okay. So in 63, they carved out that parcel?
So in 63, they carved out that other, other acre, other parcel, then sold it off to those folks.
The .68 acres, is that the one that you're talking about?
I believe so, yes.
What's on that?
Nothing.
It must be added to a piece of land you already own, maybe, or something?
I didn't go digging into that deed book, but, but that made the existing lot by sectioning that portion off. No, and then in.
So that Coppola section goes down the roadway, right, there, there are butters down the road?
Correct.
Is there a house down that? God, I thought there was nothing on that corner.
Yeah, so down, down close to the corner, there's a house, I think it was a Blair House, built up about kind of three or five years ago. It's in like number three paddock or something.
The lot was originally larger, and then they carved off, I was trying to read that.
Correct, yeah, so the lot was, so the lot was originally 2.13 acres. They carved out this .68 back in the 60s. And then when the tax taking took place, they mistakenly said that they were taking the tax lien on the 2.13. Because they, and that was in.
Oh, so the town took it over there a few years ago?
The town took, the town took the tax lien in 2000.
It's 2003, I think.
Yeah. 2003 was the final judgment, the original judgment was in 94. So in 94, they said the tax taking of 2.13 acres, that was an error because it was, at that point, it was only 1.39. And of course, then they did the final, final taking, which was recorded in 2003.
And in 2003, did they take the 2-point something, or they take the 1-point?
It just says final judgment in the meantime, it doesn't specify anything.
And what's the deed, I mean, the deed ultimately is the deed, right?
The, the tax deed was in 94, so that 94 is when the deed to the town took place.
But I'm saying, in the registry of deeds, what, what is that lot sized as?
In the registry of deeds, in the registry of deeds, it's, it actually, they hadn't specified. So the tax card has it as 1.39 acres. But the deed basically just, you know, the deed sits down.
Probably just the description.
Did they not do that back in the 60s?
One of the things we've had with grandfathering things, and just in the past, we've done the research, or just to really move this along a little quicker, is that the grandfathering doesn't convey change, when the ownership changes, the grandfather does not carry through. Especially when there's, you know, the use of the land. So I don't think we can go with the grandfathering on this.
We're, we're.
I'm just looking it up here, I've just found, you know, laws on that real quick, that it doesn't convey, but we've had a couple of cases in the past where the non-conforming, where it's non-conforming, it can continue to be used as non-conforming, well, if there was a house already on the property, it would continue to be non-conforming, you know, it could, it continued, you could pass it on, but there's no house there. Now, it hasn't been used.
The one with the house we had was on Glemmen Road, they had a farm there.
Yeah.
Remember the guy spotted off his, you know, the mother had passed away, and the, and the.
Yeah, and then we had.
Second generation had it, the third generation wanted to make it a two-family, but.
Yeah, they couldn't do it, and there were some other things in the past, but the zoning, the grandfather.
But that was with the house already there.
Yeah, this one here doesn't have a house, the lot.
One of its different with the land.
Is not conforming. And so it was non-conforming if they were using, and that's what it just says here, the profit, the land doesn't allow it to. I don't believe we can grandfather this in, because there was no, it was not.
It'd have to be the same owner as the owner, it'd have to be the same owner as the, prior to the change of zoning.
Yeah, so this, the grandfathering, I really don't even think applies here. That doesn't say I'm against putting this here, I don't think we can do it under grandfathering.
On the area regulations.
I don't know.
Page one?
Excuse me, guys, hey, please, hey, sir, excuse me, thank you, buddy, appreciate your help, yeah, man.
Page 44. Section 15.
D?
The D.
It's on page 49. The same owner for use connection with such a parcel, so a lot of parcel land having. The certain amount required by this table may be considered as coming within the area of the frontage requirement to this section, provided that such a lot or parcel land was shown on a plan or described in a deed duly recorded to the reg at the time of the adoption of this bylaw, and did not at the time of such adoption of, or other land, the same owner available for use in connection with such lot or parcel, I mean, that's a little.
And that's, that's why I made a point of saying it was in 1963.
Yeah.
That the, so he didn't own both of those parcels as of the time of this bylaw adoption. It had been separated long prior to the bylaws.
When did these come in effect, was that in the 60s sometime?
The zoning?
Yeah.
That's one, now, we did.
We did this once before.
Now, the acre and a half, that was in the last 20 years. That happened while I was in town, while I was living here. Nobody had 23 years, I remember.
His thing changed in 11.
Couldn't tell you when.
I think I've got some old ones here, I gotta go.
I got a bunch back here too, if you want.
This is all, this is, so March 22nd, 1962, first enacted.
Yeah, through 2017.
This was, yeah, I got this one through 2017 here, with amendments 2017.
Here's 2000, here's 2003.
Yeah.
2007, here's the oldest one, 2003.
And that still says 22nd of 62.
Well, yeah, but that's the original.
But he's saying his thing was in 63.
Yeah, but I'm not, typically, grandfathering expires when the lot, it doesn't pass on from one owner to the next.
You know, I remember going over that one, and I didn't agree with that, I know that didn't approve, but I was not of that opinion, personally.
I dealt with this in some towns before, and I, it never, that never came up with ownership. It was always, you know, it was, it was a lot that was cut off, right, it was legal, it was a, it was a conveyed lot. They changed zoning, and then if the guy sells it or doesn't sell it, it's a conveyed lot, is what I always was in other towns, but I haven't done it in this town. Unless there's, you know, unless you can prove there was a common owner, had an abutment, so he could have taken more land to make it legal, so as long as he, as long as that never existed.
Which the bylaw says, yeah.
Yeah, otherwise you're making, you know, existing lots unsellable and useless.
Right, that's.
So you're basically stealing somebody's value.
What year, what year was it, was the parcel carved off?
I thought you said 1963.
I think it was, I think it was 1963.
So they carved it off after that, so they made the lot, these were adopted in 62, so this says that.
I don't know when that, I don't know when that section came in, like.
So that's.
The first bylaw was in 62.
The adoptions and changes, and I didn't print it out, it's on the last page of the bylaw. I think that was, was.
I'm sorry, did they sell the .68 acres after the change, or before?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay.
The .6 acres, it sounds like they cut that off in 63, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
You know, the first town bylaw was in 62, but I don't know. You know, lot size and things have been changed over the years, so I don't know what bylaw.
That might not have been in 62, right?
Yeah, I don't know if that bylaw existed after. This is going to be something we should think about, Tamika, about, you know, having a history and, you know, for this purpose of having almost like the bylaws at which times we could go back to that grandfather, of what would apply, you know, for someone, you know, in this situation. This is now the second time.
03, it's been, since 2003, it's been 65, 64, that's 20 years it's been that.
But like, even those don't tell you what they changed in that, you know what I mean?
If it ever changed.
Like in the code, they always tell you like, what's been changed, you know, here.
When did they do minimum and lot requirements? That's what we need to know, for this, that's what we need to know.
How do you find, how you track that down?
You gotta go to Dick Wayne's. They must have track records of that.
Yeah, there must be, but it's probably all old paper copies in the clerk's office, I would think might be the only place.
So is it safe to say right now, going to grandfathering, we're a little skeptical because?
We need to know the date.
We need to know the dates.
And also what.
He's definitely not before 62, I've always just said 62 because it was before then, then it's wide open.
Right.
You know, you know you have nothing to worry about, but after 62, then you gotta figure out where you're at. Like the one on the road was before 62.
Look into ownership's thing too, if we're gonna.
Yeah, we should get clarification from the town council on that.
So we actually have another matter that we're going to be asking that question of, so I, our town council, so I can get you guys.
Can you piggyback that on, that'd be great. All right, so, so I think we can just kind of table the grandfathering thing for right now. And then let's, as a board and a group, may we want to shift the meeting to a variance request?
Yeah.
And we'll get it from that perspective. So with a variance, you need to prove a hardship. And. The hardship as, again, the variance stands, to grant the variance, a petitioner must establish the following. Due to circumstances relating to soil conditions, topography, or shape of such land or structures, and especially affecting said land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. A little enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financially or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And that's right out of the Madison General Law.
They added, they added in financial as a reason, I mean, it used to be that it wasn't.
Financial, no, financial was always in there.
I thought it was not financial.
No, no, financially, or otherwise.
Okay, all right, well, I think.
Or otherwise, financial's not the only reason, it's just a reason.
I think it's a little brain around that.
Yeah. So what's your, what's your opinions?
I would agree with Paul.
That it's.
That there's a hardship, absolutely, financial one. Especially when considering it's so close on the lot side, too, for me, anyway, that's a factor for me.
He bought it as, he was sold, he bought it at market value, it wasn't like the other one we're doing where they bought it below market value, it was a non-buildable lot. This is obviously bought with the intent, bought and sold with the intention that it was a buildable lot.
Yeah.
Price you paid for it was the market value, so.
So that's, that's, we'll open it up to public in a minute, gentlemen, okay?
I just can't hear you, we can't hear you, there's talking back here.
Hey, guys, this is the third time I have asked people to be quiet. Now, I'm just gonna talk to you like gentlemen, but this is the last time I'm gonna treat you like a gentleman, okay? Be respectful to everyone else in this meeting that's trying to do something. This is a volunteer board, you're all here to, happy you're here to engage in the government, but let's be respectful to one another, please. Thank you very much. So the financial hardship's a little bit of a trick for me, because the guy bought the property, and you gotta do your due diligence when you buy properties as a real estate guy, you gotta make sure you can get your permits before you jump in the water. And if you do that, and you're not sure, you don't have your permits in hand, that can be a little tricky on your behalf. Now, if you had something from the town that says this is a buildable lot, do you have anything in writing from there that said, that they said this was a buildable lot? Because the town led you down the road, then I think the town made a mistake, and now you, now I can justify a financial hardship. But as a developer, I think that's, you know, you've got to do your diligence, you gotta know what you're getting before you, before you jump in the water. Do you have anything from the town that said it was buildable?
So this, the Zecos Group is the, the thing, and unfortunately, you know, after the auction, all of their, their stuff goes away. And then, you know, we bid on several different properties at that auction, and that was, that wasn't, one of, it wasn't one of the ones that we were particularly interested in, but. So when I went to, when I went to print the prospectus after the fact, it was no longer available.
Do you have an attorney for your closing?
Uh, no, just, I'm turning around, that, on that one, it was, there was an attorney who, who did it for the town, but we didn't have an attorney doing it on our side.
What was paid for the lot?
Uh, 30,000 and some change.
That's it? That's well below market value on the town.
Usually there'd be a plot plan that's done for a closing, there has to be one if there's a lender, but if it's a cash deal, it's just a due diligence thing, your, your attorney would have required it.
I mean, you know, again, I don't know what else you do with this lot, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a tough one, I, I mean, I'd be amenable to go along with it, that's just my opinion, I'm a little on the fence with the financial thing.
Yeah, now that knowing what the price paid for it, lends it to be a, not, that it was not sold, it was necessarily a non-buildable lot at 38,000, so I agree with you, Chris, on the financial at that point.
38 ain't bad, that's not.
No, but lots in town are going for hundreds.
Well, that's now.
Yeah. No, 30 wasn't really that bad.
No, that's not.
Especially for a lot with wetlands, all you know, you gotta do all the engineering.
38's not far off my.
I bought, I bought two for 50 last year, so 30, two years ago.
I was gonna say, 40, 50 is what they kind of, you can go for.
Okay.
You're kind of in the swamp there, not the.
Yeah, so about half, about, about the back third of its wetlands.
Yeah, that's close to 40, by the time you're all in. All right. What else, what do you guys, I mean, just as a, anybody have any other questions or comments as far as the variance goes, hardship? I mean, the soils do bring up a hardship to a degree, where.
Yeah, the location where you placed the house, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the only option we have really is financial hardship, that'd be, you know, I mean, the topography does it.
Wish you had something from the town.
I thought, I thought he was told it was buildable.
I thought I read that too.
Yeah, I just wish you had something.
But there was something that said that it was on the.
It was, it was subject to, you know, whether I got the approval with the, or we had to write this to the wetlands. There's nobody done a wetland survey at that point, so that was our gamble on that, on the wetlands.
Yeah.
It had to do with the tax, there was a statement in there, something about, read online, that it admitted about the taxes, it was being taxed as a buildable lot, not as a non-buildable.
Correct.
Is there a different rate in town for that? Is there a different rate for that?
Well, it's a different category, there's an undevelopable land category, which is obviously taxed at a much lower rate than developable land.
Does anybody else on the board have any other comments before I open up the public discussion? Is there anybody here in the public that would have any questions or comments regarding the Zero Paddock Road variance request? Online as well?
Can I just, can I ask a question?
Ma'am, yeah, in the back?
I'm sorry, um, where is?
Oh, excuse me, just state your name and your address for Tamika, please.
I'm Christine Pilzak, where I live at 344 East County, which is right at the corner of Paddock. So I'm trying to figure out where Zero is, is that further down that newly developed side road, I mean, I don't know where that is.
Mr. Mazer, would you clear it, clarify that, please?
So if you turn onto Paddock from East County.
Yeah.
There are kind of like curves down to the left and then follows up, there's on the left, there's a, almost a compound with a white house, it's got the CNIS carpet mills sign out in front, he's got a whole bunch of buildings.
It's over there.
This is, this is the wooded lot that's right, right next to this driveway.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, nothing online, Tamika, right?
Yeah, I don't see any.
I actually have a question for Tamika, you have a computer, can you get into the town GIS, the lot stuff there, the lot card? Let's see what it says on there.
What are you looking for?
A lot of times, they'll have a lot description, a lot, property card. Is this the property card?
That is, yeah.
Yeah, they have a description here, just vacant land, vacant.
So I've got the tax card in that package that are included as well. I mean, they do have it appraised at 72, yeah, so that's, that's not deadline.
Right, this is right here, this is where you look at the description. They don't have an index on it, codes.
This might mean 99, give you vacant lands.
But it's valued at 70 something, it's not, and then a buildable lot.
It's not a non-buildable lot.
It's not a wood lot at 1.3 acres.
That was my point, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean.
So whatever the town thinks, it says residential land is the description, code 1300, I don't know what that would be. Appraised, it says that's 68, appraised at 72, so. Well, I'll just ask you guys a question, do you feel comfortable voting on this as a, as a variance? And if you do, which way, which way you're leaning, guys, or is this something you wanna just kind of dig into the grandfathering a little bit more? And go that route, if you don't feel comfortable with the variance? How you guys feeling, what are you thinking?
I feel comfortable with variance.
All right, so you wanna just, we'll just go this route, and just call it to a head here, right?
Yeah.
Feel comfortable with that? All right.
So might you want to know my position?
Uh, yeah, I'd love to, love to hear it, yeah.
I mean.
Because you're a lawyer here, so.
No, I'm just, I didn't know if you wanted to kind of table it, see what we're doing first, but I'd like to find a way to give it to them, so. I'm leaning that way.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I have no problem.
Good for, good for the town, good for him, I don't, I'm not sure what you can do with the land there, you're surrounded by wetlands, he's not gonna bother anybody.
Yeah, there's no, no butters.
I mean, reality is, if he had more land, it'd be wetland anyway.
I mean, reality is, if he had more land, it'd be wetland anyway. It's, you know, cause it's a wetland behind it.
Good point.
So. All right, so at this time, um, we're gonna close the public discussion area, okay? As that goes, and I also have a, a motion to bring this to a, to a vote. Um, do I have, do I have a motion?
Tamika's gonna come in.
Oh, Tamika.
Close the hearing.
Oh, sorry, thank you very much. All right, so at this time, I need a motion to close the hearing?
Move.
Bob, second?
Second.
Paul, thank you, um, all right, um, all in favor, oh, any discussion on closing them? No discussion here, okay? All in favor of closing the, the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Hearing none, unanimous? Okay, now looking for a motion to vote on the variance application for Zero Paddock Road. You have a motion? I'll make motion. Dave? Just stated. Bob, Bob, second it? All right, any discussion?
No.
I think we kinda set our piece right, guys, all right? So all in favor of approving the variance?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, any nays? Hearing none, that's five to zero, that motion passes unanimously. Sir, you're granted the variance per those side setbacks on your plot plan, you can build within that window. You can't go outside that window per that plan you, you put on there, okay?
Gotcha.
Just so you know, that's, that's your zone to build in.
Oh, yeah.
On that, on that thing, okay? Um, Tamika, you'll write this up?
Uh, yes, so the next step is, um, I'll write the decision, you have the board sign it. There's a twenty-day appeal period as soon as it gets quacked in with the town clerk. As long as there are no appeals during that time, at that time we'll let you know, you can pick up the decision, record it with the registry of deeds, and then you can reapply for your building permit.
For sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. All right, next up on the agenda for this evening is an application for variance at Seven Dakota Trail. This is Mark and Christine Sedowski, are you guys here? Why don't you come on up to the front if you don't mind? And Mr. Major, you don't have to stick around for this riveting conversation, but you're welcome to, you're welcome to.
So it's always educational?
Yeah, yeah, feel free, feel free, I don't wanna discourage you by no means. All right, and you, Mark?
Yes.
All right, um, so Mark, you are applying for a variance for the construction of a two-bedroom house and place on an existing house. Currently have a septic and well permit. Septic is a Title V compliant to law, it's grandfathered from nineteen twenty-six subdivision. It is a merger of four original twenty-five by one hundred lots to a total of one hundred by a hundred with an existing dwelling. And a section of the bylaw that you secretly from is building inspector denied you, this property has not been abandoned for over two years, or has, has not been abandoned.
Has.
Has?
Has.
I think that's worded wrong, that's the way it was written. Okay, so, Mrs. Sedowski, if you don't mind, why don't you walk us through your application here and how you can prove that it's, and that's the case, the grandfather issue.
Good thing, so the, uh, the prior resident, uh, he was a long-term renter, is here in the room, Mr. Sullivan. So he had rented the property for, I don't know, twenty-something years and recently purchased it, and then, um, was, he sold it to his daughter and son-in-law, which there was two parcels there. And so I am in the process of trying to acquire the entire property, which is two fifty by one hundred. So four of the original parcels merged together.
So two family members own them right now?
Correct.
And they're trying to purchase.
Yep, their husband, wife, and, and they're gonna be selling them as part of a joint package, so we have a purchase and sale agreement for that, um, with the house that's on there and everything. And we've gone through all the process to make sure that it's as compliant as can be for, for the area, for the lots, with a Title V septic, a, a permit for an artesian well. Uh, we've moved the house back from the property line, or, you know, the proposed house has moved back from the property line to give more relief from the neighbors, so it's not encroaching. Um, so we've done as many things as we can to make it better than what's there now. Um, and then when the building commissioner had cited this bylaw, I was unaware of it previously, um, but Mr. Sullivan is here to, to say that he has not been out of there for greater than two years. Um, and in fact, the property was sold in twenty twenty-one, um, so there was a transaction to say, yeah, to begin with. But there's still a power service there, they have utility bills, it's still being taxed. There's a, there's a lived-in residence, has registered there, like it's, he recently moved out of there, but, and I, I can't tell you the date, he can tell you the date, but that's where we're at.
Okay. All right, all right, um, then if you, uh.
Stanley Sullivan purchased the property, or sold the property to Melissa Andrews?
Correct.
And Stanley is who? Who was renting the property?
Well, he.
You rented the property, sir, for a period of time?
I had a ninety-nine-year lease with an auction to buy it for fifteen thousand, I think it was, I forget how much money.
Okay, when did you buy it?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Oh.
Just curious, how long did you live there before then?
Uh, around twenty, twenty years.
Around two thousand, so, yeah, just curious, okay.
When you bought it in twenty twenty-one, you were living there?
Yeah, what I, what we did is, I had a ninety-nine-year lease, I gave him twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for a ninety-nine-year lease with an auction to buy it anytime. And I opted to buy it in twenty twenty-one.
Now, but my question is, when you bought it, you were living there?
Yes.
Did you have?
I've always lived there since I moved in.
Good, you live there now?
No, not now, I moved out.
When was that?
August of twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one.
My question, why is the building inspector saying the property was abandoned? Do we have any, uh, background to that, to why he decided it was abandoned?
I think just by the way it looks, right?
He said the vegetation had grown in and that he talked to a neighbor, and the neighbor said that nobody had been there.
There's a letter in the back. Was an attachment. It's like an email, yeah.
So sir, I'm sorry, you moved out in August, so you moved out a couple of years ago?
Uh, approximately August of twenty twenty.
Couple summers ago, okay. And then it was after that that, that you sold it?
I sold it in twenty twenty-one, I think, I don't, I don't remember.
So what happened is, is we exercised his purchase agreement with Steven, who was the previous owner.
Yeah.
He bought it, and then the transaction got done, and I believe it was either February or March of twenty twenty-one, when that process got done. And after that process, he decided to put, give it to me. So we exercised it, put it in my name, because my husband owns the property right next door.
You're Melissa?
Yes, and this is Jeffrey. And my husband bought his property from his siblings back in ninety-five, when his father passed away.
Did you do anything with the property when it was deeded to you in October two thousand twenty-one?
Yes, we went in and we cleaned up the property.
Cleaned up both lots, extensively cleaned out the house and secured it, scrubbed the doors and moved it shut. Cause at that point, it wasn't really livable.
That was twenty-one?
When was the electricity, is the electricity even turned off to the house?
It has now.
When was, when was it turned off?
December of twenty twenty-one.
No, one year.
How does the bylaw, it says vacant for two years, abandoned for two years, how does that read?
It's actually, there's a lot of case law in this issue, and the courts look at, um, two factors with regard to whether a property or a lot, a structure or a lot has been abandoned. First factor is the, if, if there's evidence of intent to abandon the property for a two-year period, and along with that voluntary conduct by a party affirmative or negative, which implies abandonment. And then it goes on to say that, um, which is helpful here, the mere non-use or even sale of property does not necessarily amount to abandonment, without other factors.
The tax, it's never been, the tax bills have always been, since two thousand, paid ahead of time, time of mine on that. We, we never intended to abandon any.
And that, you know, the, the key here anyways, when's the clock stopped from when that supposed abandonment is, you know? Who's to say exactly when that was, you know what I mean, so? It's a, it's a.
I can tell you right now, that property looks better now than it did anytime he lived there. That's right.
The last one we have.
Don't bother yesterday, I wouldn't brag about it.
I mean, the one, the one of, the, the case we had before us on this, before the property was condemned. And that tick, that stopped the clock ticking, this property was not condemned.
Yeah, I mean, technically, the only.
That was condemned, right?
Yeah, there was something that said the, so this is just an opinion that it's been abandoned, and I don't agree with it.
And, you know, the neighbor, in the, in the building inspector's statements, it says for a few years, but there was no date given, that's an approximate. The only time we can say that the clock started is when the building inspector went there just recently. That would be the only real legit clock start, cause nobody went there to see it, so. Yeah, exactly, and in my opinion, you have to have a proof that the, you know. Correct. Property was abandoned, not just somebody saying, hey, you know.
It looks like it.
It looks over and wrong. Been away in the service for a year, but that's a new property, it's been abandoned for a year. There's some houses in Rutland that people live in that look, look worse than that. Yeah, that's true, I'll see that.
I don't think the building.
I'm not gonna say any rules, but.
Turning this down due to abandonment, but, I, so.
I think based on what they're telling, I think there's more evidence that it's not abandoned than, than it is.
So now, do we, the question becomes, do we need to vote on a variance on this, or just overrule the, uh, building inspector? If he's not granting, be cut due to, uh. Yeah, there's no variance required. Well, there would probably be a variance required for his building permit based on the lot conformity. It is a non-conforming existing use. So we'll probably have to, we're here, might as well hold on to where it's at, but I think we should need to put in a finding that we do not feel the property is at any point abandoned, and we're just granting variance based on continued non-conforming use.
No, but he's combining lots here, though. So let's talk about that for a minute. Cause there were four twenty-five by hundred square foot lots. And now he's made, he's, he's joining two parcels here. How does that play into effect of abandonment and, you know, the timing of things and the grandfathering of things?
How big is this house you're building compared to what's there?
So it's almost the same footprint size, but it's two stories rather than one. It's still a two-bedroom, which is the existing dwelling, uh, is registered as its two-bedroom house. So everything we're doing is in keeping with what was there, except we're doubling the size of the lot. We're putting in a Title V compliance system, we're doing an artesian well so that it passes the drinking water standard, we're moving it back from the property lines to give a little more relief from the neighbors. So everything is an improvement over what is there.
There's actually a plot plan, Paul, that shows that, it's actually, they did a nice job showing the old lot.
Thank you.
Big home on it with a new thing with the septic.
Plus there's a shed in there, too.
Yeah.
So it's an old house and a shed.
I mean, not look, it's a good look, it looks like you're cleaning the thing up.
It basically fits right over it, um.
Cause the old property was thirty by sixteen by the looks of it, the old prop, the old house.
This is twenty-two by twenty-two.
Yeah, it's pretty small. This is twenty-two by twenty-two.
Twenty-two by twenty-two.
All right, that's what I was trying, I couldn't see.
Yeah, he's got plan, house plans in there.
Yeah, I couldn't see the number. So we're going actually with a smaller property, smaller footprint over.
And over the same.
Yeah.
So again, it's just, it's all.
Well, with the. Well, that's true, is, is there something about non-conforming that you can't make it bigger?
Yeah.
Isn't that something in it, you can't make more square footage, is that part of that thing?
If it, if it's substantial, I think it gives us, gives us some discretion, but if it's a, a significant change, then it's.
I think a lot of towns adopt it ways, from my experience.
Again, we're trying to keep the footprint of the same, maybe alter the change, but only special per. Double the lot. He says change extension after the block.
How many people are gonna be living in it?
It's two bedrooms, so.
Yeah, it was meant to, I mean, if you put the same size, right, the footprint, the size. House right on top of it.
Okay, so this, this here says, it says, um, for pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses, may be extended, altered, or changed only by special permit by the Board of Appeals. Any such change, extension, or alteration shall require a finding by said board that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use of structure. For the purposes of this bylaw, any extension, alteration, or change shall not apply to work that does not increase the amount of livable, usable space in the structure or does not increase the footprint or size of the structure. So does that mean you can't make it bigger? I mean, this is a bunch of legal mumbo jumbo here.
No, you can, but the first part, as long as it's not a substantial change.
Okay.
As long as it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. The thing is, it should be better to the neighborhood, and it's not like we're making it a three-bedroom or four-bedroom or anything like that.
It's, it's.
Moving it off the property line, it's very close to the road, he's moving it off the road.
See that plan there, I'm trying to find that plan that shows the, uh.
I got a full size if you want.
Does it show the old one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, oh, yeah, nice.
Full size one's up there on the table.
Oh, underneath your binder.
Right underneath my nose.
So, so here's the lot, so. This whole road, you see, uh, it's the Dakota Trail, you see, uh, the driveway current that comes in here in a place.
That's right.
So three, four here, this rectangular one is the existing house, the square one is the proposed house. That's the shed that's gonna come out, that's the leach field, and that's the driveway. So the house, the well's right behind it, septic's in the front. So we're coming further off the property line, the existing house. So to get rid of it, so it's not approaching, and all the other.
Not essentially, cause that's how we're.
Right, and we're moving it further this way and further this way to get it away from all the other properties and from the.
Sixty.
And this is that second, you see, dividing mine here, so this is the one original.
Eight point oh nine.
That's it?
Is that a?
No, sixty point eight.
Oh, sixty.
Figure upside down. So.
Yes, that's fine. Setback sixty-three. So we got right here. Yeah. So he's combining these two, right?
Yeah.
I think a lot of houses down here.
We're contingent, cause the lots haven't been combined yet, right?
The, the purchase is contingent upon the approval of a building permit, and it's, the purchase is for both lots together, and the plan shows both lots together. So there's no, there's no way this can move forward without utilizing both lots, and the purchase is for both lots together. So it is merging them.
May I get a little hairy on the person? You put in a, uh, requirement that the lots all be combined in order to issue you a permit, where you won't get the permit until the lots are combined, which goes against, you'd have to work that out.
As you all said, in the legal paperwork.
Yeah, but just so you know, you know, we're gonna be contingent on the lot being combined. You're contingent on getting a permit, we can't give you the permit until the lots combine type of thing. We would issue you a variance with that contingency in it.
Yeah, Jake, that's a good point, is, um, any, any, anything else? Does any, any of the members have any other questions, comments, or anything right now before I open it to the public?
That would be the only thing for me, is just, I would wanna make sure the lots are gonna be combined.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can show that in the purchase and sale agreement, that it's a, a joint, uh.
You're good, Paul, you have anything else? All good, all good. All right, this time, just like to open up the, um, this, uh, meeting to the public. If anybody has any opinions, questions, comments, or complaints, please, sir, you raised your hand in the back there. Please state your name and your address to, Ms. Murphy, please, for the record.
Hi, hi, good evening, my name's Tony Cersei, I live at two nineteen Turkey Hill Road, right next to this property. And, uh, and according to this following statement, he's been out of there since August of twenty twenty, that's two years, ain't it? I mean, not that I don't want something nice put there, but if the lot is only a hundred by a hundred, according to the, uh, the codes in the town, and that, uh, you know what I mean, that's a, that's a pretty small lot. And, uh, over the summer, I spoke to an engineer that was, come over, he wanted to know where our septic was and our well was, because you're supposed to have a hundred feet between them. You know, if the lot's only a hundred feet wide, I'm not even gonna fit that in there. But according to Mr. Sedowski, he said that it's been engineered, I mean, anybody see the perk test? I don't remember ever seeing the perk, if anybody perked away in the property or whatnot, you know what I mean? I got no objection about the guy trying to build a house for himself, make it better, I'm all for that.
Yeah, no, I, I think I can, I think I might be able to answer this, and excuse me, correct if I'm wrong, this is, but. The Board of Health has issued an, uh, proof. an approved septic design and permit for him to do this on this lot if he was to go forward with it. So the Board of Health has approved that, sir?
Yeah.
So again, I'm not a.
No, but he, the Board of Health have witnessed the perk test.
Yeah, they would have to witness the perk test.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah.
That's on site, that has, that's part of the process.
I didn't see, you know, I didn't see any of that activity take place, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah.
My point is, you know, I just don't want, you're gonna spend a lot of money there and end up with nothing in the end, or end up with trouble. The town ended up with trouble, because the water, I've lived in, out there since nineteen sixty. The water tracks down the road and drops through that lot and, and goes towards the pond. And that, you know what I mean, like I say, the, the place has been, the door has been wide open for two years. So you tell me if you consider that abandoned property or not, you know, I don't know. You know what I mean, nobody been in there.
Well, it's a good question.
Couple of fellas were out there. One day they patched the roof, that was about it, and then they hightailed out of there, but like I say, it's been, been just sitting there dilapidating. And that, I'm all for upgrading the neighborhood, that helps my property value, you know what I mean? But it's just that you spend all that money there and you end up with problems in the end. Drainage over that in Rutland is considerably tough, you know, as far as getting the perk test. That's why I'm surprised Board of Health, you know, has given it a clean bill of health, you know what I mean? The people next door, they got a tight tank and they got twice as much property. Well, that's only, my only main concern is that, that, you know, it'd be nice to have something good there, but I hate to see people waste their money on something that's, you know, when I grew up there, there was a one-room camp. A lady, one lady there, Mary Bodette, she lived there, she was a seamstress. And that, and, uh, I know we used to shovel the snow for her, shovel her car out when we were kids. And that, it was her, her bed was, looked like a sleeper on a train. She had a, that was sunk into the wall and with curtains and whatnot, cabinets underneath. And it had a bathroom, a toilet in the other, other part, you know, as far as two-bedroom, it was none of that. But, you know, hey, I got no objection about people trying to make money and that, but I mean, just don't want no trouble afterwards, that's all. Now's the time, now's the time to take care of it.
Understood, yeah.
That's all I have to say.
Should talk about the distance, so that we can, we can bring that up. Does anybody else have any other questions? Name and address, please.
Beth Plaumber, to Dakota Trail. Our road is a private road in the town, only plows it, and we've already spent thousands and thousands of dollars in the last ten years patching it up and fixing it. The VFI guy got struck to his whims in mud. And I just don't know what that's gonna be, if I, I don't, I don't know where his driveway is. I think I just heard him say it was gonna come in from Dakota. But there's not, where his land is, is a big hill that kinda, like he said, all the water comes down that street. And we put pikes in the middle of the road, we've done a ton of things, and the town just has never really been open to doing anything to help us down there. And I'm just concerned, and like you said, square footage, if it's two, two-bedroom, it's gonna be two, twice as much square footage as if it's the same, same conformed lot. And even my house, I could only, they won't give me permission for two, two-bedroom because of the septic, what it's set up in. I don't know where their septic is. This is David next door to me, and I don't know where his septic is related to where their well is gonna be. But already we have a lot of problems with the water coming down that road, and I don't know if this is gonna make it worse or help it, or, you know, he's gonna be one more person we gotta go, and I don't know if he's building it for himself or just flipping it, I don't know. But, you know, then that person moves in, if he flips it, and they have no clue what's going on. And they don't know, at this meeting to say, we're concerned, because every time the road gets real bad, we go knocking on doors, will you chip in, will you chip in? Because they want you to go all the way down my street and plow, they, even when they sand, they drive down, they sand, and they leave. So the whole end of the road, which is a little ice raking skating, we never get sanded. And I've called the town many times saying, could you come backwards and sand the bottom of the road, because that's where all the ice is? So that's my concern as a, as a neighbor.
You know, I, I think for the drainage, just to kind of address your concern, just from my opinion, the drainage, the lot of the land is not gonna change. You know, the, the topography of the land. Right now, that water drains off of all your yards and the way it drains and it flows, and obviously that, I've been down that road yesterday, that road is the lowest point between pretty much everybody's yards, so it's going to be the collection point, and it will stay the collection point. But there's no more water falling on that square footage of land than falls on there right now.
Oh, no, I just don't want.
In the future, so it's not like.
I'm not saying that, it's just.
It's not like more water's gonna flow there because his house is there. It's still gonna continue to flow with the topography.
To come more around.
I mean, the, the water from the road drops in on where that septic system is proposed. So that'll either have to be raised or.
Yeah, again, whether it's raised or not, that's all based on the perk test, and that's all part of the design that's in here. And we're not, you know, we're not here to discuss or approve the septic system per se. The fact that he has that approved by the town, we really can't say whether or not, you know, it's gonna work or not, we're not here to judge that. We're just here to judge whether, you know, this should be on this lot or not.
You said when they dug up the road, they removed the pipe.
Does anybody have another question?
Yeah, what?
Yeah, yes, sir. You got a name and address, please?
Yes, Robert Hart, Six Metal Brook Drive, Paxton, Mass. My wife owns two lots. Right off O'Nita Trail, and I just wanted to say that we're in favor of anybody building that area. We had attempted to sell our property.
Excuse me, just one question. Where is O'Nita Trail to this?
Right next, right next to.
It's parallel to that.
Yeah, parallel with it, so they both come off a, they both go down towards the water?
O'Nita Trail and right across, uh, where.
So you're just, you're just on the parcel side then?
Republican chairman of this house.
Okay, thank you.
Two nineteen, right?
Not that I know of.
It was in Jake's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Relation, Jake's.
Jacobs.
Jacobs, it was Jacobs, yeah. It was Jacobs, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, I got it.
Right there. Okay, you under two processes there, okay, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we, uh, we had a developer interested in, he didn't have favorable feelings from the neighborhood. That he had threats that his equipment would be destroyed and everything else, while we intend to build next year. So these meetings are very important to us, the variance, if we have to have one, but we've got much, plenty of land to build on, we intend to build. So it's gonna happen next year sometime, we'll go for the permits, but we support anybody that's trying to upgrade or work hard at improving Rutland.
Alright, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments, everybody. Any, uh, any other comments? Anybody online? Alright, thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so, uh, the gentleman's comments about the septic and the location of the property in regards to somebody else's. Your experience is that the Board of Health take that in consideration, or is that a consideration?
Yes, it'll be discussed.
And that would have been discussed, I mean, you know, that would have been.
Richie Stevens would have been.
Gone through that, make sure that that was.
Before it came here, absolutely.
And, and the well as well, also, well as well.
Yeah, yeah, the well's not, the well is proposed, this is all, you already got your permits for the septic.
Yeah, and septic and the well, the.
That's the, exactly. And then they would have gone through that, that gentleman's concerns about the location of the well. And the location of the septic.
Seventy-five feet or something away from the septic.
You, um, you're supposed to be a hundred feet away, but they have variances up to fifty.
Right, yeah.
The way I look at this, you're going from probably, it's probably a cesspool there.
Yeah, it shows it right there.
And you're going to now a Title V, you're, you know, that's right down by the water, this is just only upgrading and making this a lot healthier situation. I think the footprint of the house is not changing, size-wise, it's actually smaller. The square footage is gonna increase, because you're putting a second floor in, but you're not increasing the footprint of the house at all, if anything, according to their plan, you're going down inside.
Which you also doubled the lot here too, that was a single.
You're increasing, I mean, if they.
So with that, with that, I just gotta shoot one question up there to you guys on the board. So, because I'm just kinda like, he's changing the lot, size. So does that affect it in a negative way, or does that say, hey, it's a big lot, it's better? But does the fact that he's changing the lot hurt him from a grandfathering point? Like, that's just kind of like a little conundrum I'm stuck on right now.
I go into this to special permit, the lot pulled out, I mean, he's upgrading.
Alright, nonconforming.
Yeah, no.
Nonconforming, upgrading.
So then, did he file for the wrong thing then?
I'm guessing, yeah.
Because we're, because he filed for a variance and he's under the grandfathering, correct?
Yeah, I think it's a really special permit, because the house is being redone.
Special permit if we go that.
Because the building inspector denied it based upon the, that bylaw, um, otherwise.
Being abandoned, it's nonconforming.
He put on his list that was nonconforming and abandoned. He had both on, and nonconforming and abandoned, so that's why he went with variance, because it was nonconforming according to him.
But even without that second lot, technically, we should be able to do this, just on the one.
And that's kind of my, my, my thinking, like, you can actually do what you're doing on that lot.
Yeah.
If you grandfathered it, you don't change the size, so to speak, right? And you're not hurting the town, you know, but having that extra lot helps him.
Yeah, give your place.
Double the land value.
In reality, it helps him, but legally doesn't hurt him, I guess, and, and.
I don't see.
I don't think legally it hurts him.
Legally shouldn't hurt him.
I don't think so.
Alright.
And I think as long as, again, we can make a condition that the extra lot comes into play.
Yeah, because I think it's kind of essential to make sure you get the septic done right.
It has, yes, that's.
I mean, having the extra lot makes the septic a lot better.
Yeah.
Um, sir, you, you had another.
Is it my understanding that the Board of Health has, has waived the distance, the hundred feet distance between the well and the septic system?
On his lot.
They're not only.
On his lot, yeah.
And on the way, that's, that's okay.
Yeah. They have the ability to grant the variance, what did you, what did you say, up to fifty feet?
And, and also, being that close to the road, there's not a twenty-foot set, he doesn't have a twenty-foot setback over there, is that okay?
So, yeah, so the, the way the setbacks work with nonconforming structures like that, as long as you don't impede the, the, the incorrect distance you have. So like right now, let's just say he's ten feet and he needs twenty. He's not going any closer than the ten feet, so he's legal to do it that way. If he was to get closer than that ten feet that's existing, then that's a problem, that's something he would have to get a real variance for, like anybody else would, you know, encroaching on a setback. So the two setbacks where he doesn't have the distance, he's not encroaching on it, we did look at that. On the other two, the, the, um, the Turkey Hill side, and I believe it's your side, with the extra lot, he has over sixty feet on both of those, which is well within the side and front setbacks. Okay, so he would be fine there, you know, again, the extra lot does help.
Is it a raised bed?
A raised septic?
Yes, a raised.
Is that a raised septic?
Yeah, it's four feet higher than the existing topo now, so it's gonna be four feet higher than what it is now.
Alright. Any other questions, concerns, anything you guys want to discuss?
This, uh, we're, we're going to, special permit, what does this do to the procedure here?
He's gonna have to withdraw this and file for special permit, correct? And Tameek, what do you think?
We still have to get the variance because the building inspector denied it for being abandoned.
Well, would that be a variance, or would that just be an overturning of the building inspector's opinion?
Well, he would not, if, if he just applies for a special permit, that denial by the building inspector becomes null and void. And he gets a special permit, and then he would reapply for a building permit, and he'd have the authority to get that building permit through a special permit, correct? The avenue in which he went right now, he would need a variance.
But if you're getting a special permit.
Without a special permit, he would need a variance.
Special permit applies to the nonconforming status, but it doesn't address the abandoned. So if he gets a special permit, puts it through, the building inspector still says, I still consider this abandoned.
He would shoot it down.
He could still technically shoot it down.
And then we, then he comes to us and we discuss the special, then we discuss the abandonment issue again.
This is crazy to go through all this again, like, this is, this is the.
Sir, listen, this, this, I, listen, trust me, nobody hates the laws in Massachusetts more than me, okay?
I get it.
I can't stand them, they make too many of them, you know, there's too many people making too many, and if you wanna fire half of them, let me know, I'll sign up on a petition.
Well, now, we're running in circles.
Until then, we have these laws, we do have to follow them.
I understand, but we apply for the variances for whatever it is that we need to do, and we're established that this is gonna be better than what's there. Why can't you just issue whatever variances are required to say, we're all separated?
I appreciate your concern. We're discussing this as a board right now, which is the legal way to go. I'm not saying we're going anyway, but I'm just trying to get opinions from everybody to make sure we're doing the right thing. Because if we break the law and someone has a problem with it, you're all done.
Understood.
So help me, help you. You got it?
Well, I'm kinda interested in what you just brought up, though.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
And I, I'm, you know, I don't, I'm not, I don't have the roadmap here, I'm just trying to figure it out as we go along.
Right.
You know, what is the right way to go? I mean, is the variance for abandonment?
I don't think it's, I don't, you don't issue a variance for abandonment, because it's, we, we have not determined that it's abandoned. I mean, we're determining that it is not abandoned.
It's not abandoned.
It's not a variance issue, we're just saying that the building inspector in his judgment was incorrect in his judgment, because he has nothing to base abandonment on. He made an opinion that we feel is wrong, so we feel his denial of it on reason for abandonment is incorrect.
So that's, that's my point.
We could overturn that.
Can we actually make a variance on this? I don't think we can. I think you have to have a special permit.
Chris, what would happen if, if somebody was living in that house right now, and he came to put a house on it and change it to this house, as if it's not, never been abandoned, what would be the steps we take?
So the, basically, when the building inspector issues a nonconforming lot like this for abandonment, this applies to special permits. There are different, zone, people come to zoning boards with different things. Variances and special permits, okay? Um, special permits, like for the cell tower we have, special permits for nonconforming, there are different zoning special permits we do, and then variances we do. So I think this should, I mean, I don't know who directed them to, to fill out a variance application, but I think it should have been filled out as a special permit. And then we would have heard it, because what, what I'm seeing is, we're gonna go around back to that, then we're gonna have the same dang discussion that you're talking about, which is a whole lot of waste of time and everything, but that's.
So we're throwing, we're saying.
I don't think we can make a variance.
So the only way it is, is nonconforming is the only issue, at this point, in our board.
That's it.
Chris, may I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
My first question is, um, is there something in the bylaw that allows the board to say, we disagree with the building inspector's denial and we overturn it? So that he no longer has the authority to deny it? That would be my, my first question, and my second question is, if there was no abandonment question at all, would he still need a special permit from this board to build what he's looking to build? Like, if this had never come before with the abandonment, would he still have needed to apply for a special permit?
Yes.
I don't think so.
I think he would, because he's changing the location of the house, he's not just doing a.
But he's not changing the, the dimensions of the footprint.
Oh, yeah, he is.
Well, he's changing the dimensions, same square footage, but it's different.
He's moving the, he's moving the house, he's not using the existing foundations, he's not using the existing walls. He's substantially changing the property, the existing building, you know, that existing building is coming down.
Well, we just discussed that before, we said that it is not substantially more detrimental.
It's not, right, that's why you would give this special permit, it's not detrimental. But if you read in there, it does talk about how, you know.
But I mean, right here, this says you gotta apply for a special permit.
Right.
Not a variance.
Right.
So why don't, so can we just make an order on what's in front of us? On the, uh, if we're of the opinion, and everybody agrees, we could issue an order that, um, that we find that it hasn't been abandoned in its grandfather. The nonconforming lot, and then if they need something else, they'll come back, i.e. special permit. We can't make any rulings on something that's not in front of us, right? We can't address, address special permit issues, because they're not here on a special permit.
I just, my other question is how to address the building inspector's denial, because I just don't wanna go back to him and then have him say, well, busy bee doesn't have a right to do that, or, you know what I mean?
I don't know that we have the authority to.
That's what I'm questioning is if it.
To grant a variance on that. I, I really don't know. I would have to ask the town council to see if we can vary his decision. We vary zoning bylaws, we don't vary. The, the building inspector is a zoning official.
Yeah.
In, in this town and in a lot of towns, so I, I don't think we can vary that. We, we have to judge the issue, not his complaint.
Right, so technically it's not a matter of hardship, per se, like a variance would have, but the bylaws says if you get denied by the building inspector, you have to apply for a variance. I think that's where it's gray in this case. But I just wasn't sure if the bylaw specifically stated that the board has the right to overturn and deny without issuing a decision.
Well, the other thing we can do is where we can deny the variance and just, you know, know that we're gonna approve a special permit.
Well, I would tell, I would, I would tell him just to withdraw, because if you're denying, you can't come back for two years.
No, right.
And that's not good on his behalf.
So, I mean, if you didn't, if you withdrew, I mean, I don't wanna speak for, I don't wanna speak for the board. I don't wanna speak for the board here, but would the board be in favor of a special permit on this, in general?
Oh, good, yeah.
Alright, so. I mean, I, I'm.
My only question, just devil's advocate.
Yep.
It still doesn't address that the building inspector believes this property to be abandoned. So even if you're willing to grant the special permit, he could still come back and say, I believe this property to be abandoned, I'm not gonna approve the board.
Well, no, in fact, it's gonna happen first.
But that's for nonconforming.
It's already happened, so what I'm saying is, this applica, he's just, this gentleman just had, needs to go back and fill out a different application. So, and technically, what I'm, what I'm suggesting, just suggesting, he withdraws this variance application, goes back up to the town tomorrow, requests. goes back up to the town tomorrow, requests a special permit, and possibly an extension if the building inspector gave you a time, I don't know if he gave you, you have so many time to, so much time to get this resolved, but if he didn't, you have, you don't have to worry about it. But then he just files a special permit based on the building inspector already giving him a denial, the denial's already there, he just uses the same denial, but fills out a separate application for a special permit, and then we hear this as a special permit application, because he was denied of, of non-conforming.
You're not reapplying for a building permit, whenever you're gonna see him again, you're just coming right to us.
Yep, you just go back and fill out a different, you just fill out the right permit for what you need here, you don't, you don't need a variance, you need a special permit, because the way the building inspector has designated, if he told you to get a variance, I'm sorry, he might've just used the wrong terminology to lead, led you in the wrong direction, but it would be ju, this issue to me seems like it's a special permit issue, and again, I'm not a hundred percent convinced, but I'm pretty convinced that that's the right way to handle this legally from, from a zoning board approval. And I'm not trying to drag this out anymore, but just trust me.
Let's just say, he fills out tonight, brings it in tomorrow, how soon does he get in front of us again?
He's got, you gotta post it again.
Right, so we have to, it has to be posted in the paper for two weeks, the butters have to be notified two weeks in advance, so you're definitely looking after the holidays before we get it back before again.
So another, basically, a month before you're back in front of us, it would take a few days.
Unless something else comes up, I don't, I think that's your favorable way, I don't see anything, until we've already discussed, that's kind of true.
I mean, honestly, right now, unless somebody on this board comes up with a really good reason why we're legally allowed to vote on this variance from this building inspector's thing, I would just say, if you wanna continue this, we can go to the, to this town council and get their opinion, and in doing that, honestly, Mark, I don't think you're gonna get the favorable opinion looking for. I, I think at this point, the quickest way to go is the special permit, and we're probably not gonna get that answer and be able to schedule another appointment until about the same time you would, just filling out the other request, the other special permit request.
A special permit, come back here, we have the same conversations, and then we should be all settled.
It'll be even shorter next time.
I'm sorry, man, I, I, I'm not trying to be, I'm not one, like I said, I'm not one, I don't mind thinking things happen, but you gotta just, we gotta follow the rules and the laws, I mean, the laws are the laws, and that's why you have a special permit and you have a variance. Sorry, buddy.
I mean, just, my understanding is, the building inspector probably would've issued the building permit had it not been for that one bylaw that he was citing about the abandoned property, so now, if that went away, my feeling is that he would've issued the permit, he would issue a...
I would think he could've, because it's still non-conforming.
It's non-conforming.
It still would've came here.
Yeah, under, under a special permit.
Because it, you only have a 10,000 square feet of land, and there's no lots or new house that allows it.
No, but it was pre-existing.
I know, but it's, it's an automatic denial, it comes here and then it...
Because you're taking down the house, if you had been going on the same spot, leaving...
Literally leaving that house there and fixing it up.
Leaving that house and fixing that up, yeah, he could've approved that, but where you're changing the location of the house, even by six inches, that makes...
He'll come back here anyway.
It's an automatic denial.
Okay.
Yeah, well, for the tone of the board, even though you're shifting a little bit, you're moving a little bit, I think in general, you're making it a, a better place, you're, you know, certainly, you know, bettering the septic system for everybody's water quality than a cesspool over there, right? I mean, that's better for everybody, and, you know, I, I don't think that's a big deal for this, I think we're pretty much in favor of these things for the most part.
Mark, I'll send you what you need, I'll be in Philly tomorrow and send you everything that you need.
All right, thank you.
Seems like a clearer definition of abandoned, in that bylaw would avoid all of this, you guys haven't run into this before? This is the first time, maybe?
Um, there's a clear definition, but it's, it's two years, it's when does the clock start, it's not an opinion, there are certain things, like we've had a case in the past where the house was condemned, the fire department declared it.
Oh, there was a fire?
No, the fire department, there's some, you know...
In the structure, it had a fire. Dangerous, you know?
You know?
And they put the big X on it, that's an abandoned.
If a neighbor had called and complained on this at some point, and the building inspector went down, and the Board of Health went down, said, yep, nope, abandoned, that starts the clock on the two years, this clock was never started.
Right. You know, I mean, the, the gentleman in the back brings up a good question, I mean, this gentleman's been out for over two years, he hasn't been living there, is that abandonment? I mean, it brings up a good question.
Unoccupied's different.
Unoccupied and abandoned is two different things, okay?
I saw that door shut.
Because a lot of, we, we had another property in town where a guy was using a building for storage, and all the neighbors came and said, hey, the guy's never here. Well, he goes, I come, I come there at nine o'clock at night, and I grab a pallet of material and I leave, I'm not there during the day, so the neighbors don't see me, or whatever, it's really hard, you know, to prove abandonment, unless you have an, an issuance from a building inspector or a fire department to say you can't go in here, it's, it's been, you know?
He also said that he witnessed me, it was me on the roof fixing the roof, I did it three times since 2020, so...
Right, yeah. So, yeah, it's, it's, just because no one's living there doesn't necessarily mean it's abandoned, okay?
This, this clock officially started, but then the inspector's...
I mean, he's got an argument, and you've got an argument, but...
Wait a minute, I'm not, I'm only...
No, no, I'm just saying in general, just, just to say, I don't mean it's an argument, but just something to discuss, you know, and it's a good point, sir, you brought up a good point, you know, no one's living there for two years.
Theoretically, theoretically, according to his statement, he was out there in August of 2020, that's two years.
Right, but it's, abandoned's different.
What he had, what he had the power on there, he had tax, he was paying taxes on it, you know, one, one thing like we've done in town, when the people stop paying tax and they just say, hey, see you later.
That's abandoning, that's abandoning.
They're, they're, they're literally abandoning it when they stop paying their taxes.
That's just happened late a minute.
Right, so, understood, understood, that's why that's...
So we took those things into consideration to come up with the belief that it's not truly officially abandoned.
We need to get him to officially withdraw his...
Yes, you either wanna...
There's a form, I'll send you the form, you can just sign it and send it back to me and drop it off, that just says you're withdrawing your application, and then we'll start fresh with the special permit, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Sorry, dude, but I know it's a, just a painstaking process to go through, but I think it's the right legal way to go, and the town's doing the right thing, because we are responsible to the town, just as, more importantly than just anybody coming before us, and we wanna do things the right way, so, hope you can appreciate that, trust me, like I said, we, we all got better things to do, even in January.
Chris said earlier, if you do it right the first time, it carries it forever, so you don't have, nothing comes back to bite you.
But you have that hanging out there, somebody always gets a, you know, gets it, gets an infor, you look up, you know, so, we don't want that.
What do we need, a motion?
So we just need a...
A motion to close the hearing.
A motion to close the hearing, do we have that?
The motion to close.
All right, seconded, all right, any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor to close this hea, uh, this, this hearing? Aye. Aye. Any ayes?
If I may, it probably wouldn't hurt for the board to accept the withdrawal of the variance as well.
Right, and then just make that part of the discussion right now?
Yeah, I think we should just...
Yeah, before, before we vote.
Make the motion to accept the withdrawal.
Second. Okay, all in favor to accept the motion to withdraw? Aye. Aye. Any ayes? Hearing none, the motion is unanimous, and now, you know, all in favor to close this hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
We don't have a vote, so I'll say anything.
All right, so, that carries unanimously as well, so, you withdrawn, the hearing's closed, sir, and, sorry, buddy, you know, sometimes, too, just, sometimes, I'm, I'm kinda new to being the chairman here, and, and if you had Rick, the guy before me, he probably would've caught your application, said, hey, right away, you filed the wrong application, quick, redo it, but you got the rookie here, so, you taught me a lesson too, and I'm sorry, because personally, I just wanted to say, if I was on my game and I kinda went through it all, I might've caught that, but maybe the next guy in a couple more years, I'll catch him. Sorry, buddy.
Do it for all of us.
All right, yeah, so, all right.
Thank you.
What's up next, just a few things, next on the...
About a month now, right?
Four months.
Four months.
Oh, yeah.
All right, next up on the agenda, we just got, just any other things, that Smithsonian thing that they passed around, so a little Smithsonian exhibit, if anybody wants to attend that, they pass that around to the chairheads, and I just, I'm gonna shoot that out to you, and then I think that's everything, right? Nothing else coming up?
Nothing else coming up.
Except for this gentleman.
A special permit in the near future.
All right, so, motion to close this meeting?
I moved...
Seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Oh, I think I wanna stay a little longer discussing this.
Any ayes?
I'll be hated at my second meeting.
Hearing none, hearing no, yeah, hearing no ayes, it's unanimous, meeting is closed, thank you, folks.